Thank you very much for joining us. Good afternoon and half a day. Without further delay, I'd like to defer the virtual floor to our president, Ms. Liz Duenias.
Okay. Thank you, Governor Camacho and Toniata, for being here with us today. The purpose of our town hall meeting was so that we can afford our 600-plus members to hear your point of views. I think we were pretty transparent in sending out questionnaires and getting your responses. Our town hall meeting will basically go over those questions. There's no hidden bombs. There's no other agendas other than to get your point of view. And unfortunately, we just contacted the governor's office, and they stated that they did not give us a confirmed attendance for this event. It's unfortunate. However, you guys are here, and of course, we want to hear your points of view. I think next in line will be Monti to give the rules and guidelines.
Well, thank you, and again, welcome, Governor Camacho and Toniata, for joining us today. I've got some rules of the road. I'm not sure how pertinent they are when you're the only one answering the questions. But we'd like to just keep the responses to three minutes. And you're welcome to choose which one of you would like to answer the question. Obviously, if one of you answered the question, I'm pretty sure the other person has the same opinion. So we'll give you three minutes for an introduction with your full name, your brief background, why you're running for the position, and on each question, two minutes. And when you come within 15 seconds of the end of the two minutes, Peggy's background will turn yellow. And when your two minutes is up, it'll turn red. It won't look quite as... It'd be redder than those roses behind her. There's a yellow, and that's the red. There you go. Yeah. That's pretty much it at the end. We'll give you a few minutes to do closing. We want to thank you very much. Obviously, you've got lots of experience. You've done this numerous times before, so we won't belabor you too much. And the chairman of this election committee is actually John Duenias, so I turn the floor over to John.
Thank you, Monti. I was going to say we could have a game of charades here where... Not maybe not charades, but a double identity. I know when I go out and play golf, sometimes I play against myself, and I'm, you know, I'm JC and I'm JD. So I was thinking, maybe you could respond for the other side. But we won't do that because... I won't be fair. Anyway, thank you very much for appearing and for addressing our membership. We posed questions that we thought were very important and important to our membership. And we look forward to hearing your answers. I know we received your questionnaire filled out, but now you have a chance to articulate that. Thank you very much. I guess we can turn it over to Peggy, who will move on to introductions, right?
Looks like it times up. It's already red, John.
Thank you very much. This is going to be just as valuable to all our Realtors and all the other audience to hear our candidates that are here. So we thank you once again for taking the time. Please take a moment to convey your welcoming remarks, your opening remarks, up to three minutes each. And we'll start with our gubernatorial candidate, Mr. Felix Camacho thereafter, Mr. Toniata.
All right, thank you. We very much appreciate this opportunity to appear before the Guam Association of Realtors, that GAR, as you will, and of course, to answer questions regarding many issues that are affecting your industry. I find it... I very much appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. As a homeowner and together with my siblings as property owners in the market out there, we have fully felt the effects of it. You know, like many others that have tried to build a house and have rental units and the like, we understand the challenges and difficulties out there. But at the same time, happy to contribute to this economy. I'm running because I felt a calling. I was happily retired, of course, being out of government for roughly 12 years, but having served two terms as a governor and four terms as a senator. But prior to that, my life had been in the private sector. And offering my experiences at a time, a very critical time, I believe in our history, where we have been through the most difficult of times with this pandemic and a total shutdown and lockdown of our economy and our lives, that I felt I had to step off the sidelines and offer myself with the many experiences I've had, both as a lawmaker and as a governor, to come and serve yet again for the benefit of the next generation. I'm very much interested in mentoring and getting that next generation, the generation of promise to step up and fulfill their will and purpose in their time. But with regard to real estate and all, we're very happy to answer your questions today. I'll turn it over to Senator Toniata.
Half a day, everyone. Thank you to the Guam Association of Realtors for allowing us to be here today to speak with you about the different issues that you presented to us on the questionnaire. As you all know, I've worked many legislations with GAR. And before introducing, I always come to get the input from the membership on the effects that the legislation would have and, you know, the consequences so that we can address it prior to introduction. I'm Toniata. I'm serving my fifth term in the Guam Legislature. And like Governor Camacho, you know, we want to do what we can to effectuate policies that were placed through the legislature and now in the executive branch, taking those policies and working with it, but most especially working with you so that we can do what we can to make our island better for not just investors, but also for those who call Guam home. Home ownership, home rentals, apartment rentals, whatever it may be, that's what we want to do, is to work together with the people who are out there in the community that knows what's going on, what needs to be done, and how we can do it effectively together so that in the end, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but we're just trying to work it so that in the people of Guam will be able to benefit from it. So again, thank you for this opportunity to be with you and to talk with you. And we look forward to the questions that come forward and our answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to defer the first question to Mr. Christopher Felix.
Thank you, Governor, Senator. Increase in real estate tax rate for the properties with improvements valued at $1 million or more. As you know, public law 35-1 became law on March 2, 2019 to correct an error in the previous law created by the 34th legislature to make clear that the law imposes an additional 100% tax levy on Guam real property with property improvement values at $1 million or more. This additional tax levy has created a severe financial burden to a certain class of property owners and most especially to residential and commercial tenants whose rental spaces happen to be in buildings valued at $1 million or more, being that the additional cost of the tax levy will most surely be passed on to the tenants. And the question is, will your team introduce or support legislation to repeal this law?
Well, I'll begin, and of course, Senator can jump in. But I don't believe that the general public had any idea of exactly how unfair this tax is to residential property owners and also to commercial tenants. As you know, for example, condominium complex with 10 individually owned units is valued at $2 million, for example, in the real estate. It's assessed on the value of the complex. While the payment for the taxes is divided among, say, the 10 individual owners, in this case, each unit is valued at $200,000. So the inequity of this situation is that each condo owner is paying taxes on the $1 million as opposed to an individual owner of a single-family detached home at $200,000. And so we feel that it is absolutely unfair, and there is a definite need to perhaps... If legislation is introduced that would, again, repeal this law, we feel that it is absolutely necessary. We would support this. And of course, the impact upon multifamily residential units has been unfair. Retail space, we felt it ourselves, you know, being owners of retail space, our tenants, we'd have to pass on the cost of that. It definitely had hurt in a very difficult time when there were lockdowns and shutdowns. Our tenants would not be able to pay rent. But still, we had to pay the banks. We have to pay the government. So there is a definite need to understand the impact that this has had and repeal it. Senator?
And you know, and this is what I was talking about in the very beginning on our opening statement, where, you know, putting forth legislation to the association prior to introduction so that we know what the impact would be and not backpedaling now where, you know, we're saying, oh, my goodness, look at what is done over the past couple of years. But as Governor Camacho said, you know, we will look at repealing this. And you know, this is something that should be repealed. And it's not... There's no equity in it for anyone, be it condominium owners, apartment owners, or even the commercial establishments, you know. And perhaps the repeal of this law would at least bring down some of the costs for rentals or even on apartments and homes, and that's commercial space, and that's what we hope for.
Yes, and you know, when I think of the property tax, it's normally at about 0.5% of the assessed value of the land. The assessed value really is 35% of, according to our laws, of the appraised value of the property or the market value. And then typically, there's an additional 1% on the value of the building. So with this new law, I think it moved it up to 7 and 1/18% of the value. So repealing of this will definitely help on rental rates for tenants and improve the situation.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that answer. And I'd like to find out if there's a follow-up question to this from our panelists. I see none. We will proceed to the next question from Mr. John Duenias.
Thank you, Peggy. In my other life, other than being a principal broker of a realty company, I'm also a principal engineer of a consulting company. And I have firsthand view of the building permit process and how it can affect the success or failure of projects. So the topic is improving the building permit process. Property owners seeking to construct improvements on their property as well as contractors engaged to construct such improvements are confronted by a building permit application and occupancy permit process that, to date, is beset with unreasonable and unresponsive review periods, sometimes unreasonable or unreasonable, inconsistent and shifting permit requirements of certain review agencies and in particular, certain individual reviewers, and a frustratingly linear review process. It seems that no one, individual or commercial enterprise, is immune to the adverse effects of the current building permit application and occupancy permit issuance process. The question is, how will your team improve and expedite the building permit application and the occupancy permit issuance process?
Thank you for that, John. You know...
I'm sorry. I was going to just make mention that we have... We will give the candidates two minutes each to answer as you please.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, John. You know, with as much technology as we have today, especially over the past year and a half with the COVID-19 pandemic, it's amazing that we don't have a process down yet to implement expedited permitting clearance process. However, when we look at what we want to do, I think we need to look at all the departments and agencies and see where is it that they're lacking. And that's where the expertise of like yourself, you know, you know what it takes to go to Department of Land Management or Department of Public Works or, you know, Parks and Recreation. If there's a certain permit that doesn't need... For example, if you're doing a renovation inside the mall, I don't believe you need a permit, a clearance from Parks and Recreation or, you know, Department of Agriculture. I mean, we need to start streamlining these processes down so that what we want to do is only make those that are applicable for clearance that the person would have to go through. And the other thing is, what we can also do is build or have a more effective one-stop permit center. And what we need to do is put the personnel that have the experience in those different agencies and departments, put them forward so that they can be doing this process simultaneously so that, you know, the process works faster. And we can also try to work with the legislature, and that's what we want to do, is work with the legislature, that currently, if you send down your rules and regulations to the legislature, and the legislature does not act in it by amending, rejecting, or approving, then it automatically gets approved within 45 days. So that's something that maybe we can also look at, that if an agency or department has not approved that process in 30, 45 days, whatever it may be, then, you know, it moves on. It's automatically cleared and moved on to the next department.
Okay. Well, I think the question laid out all the problems that the building permit review process is slow and unresponsive. And anyone who's known or among... It's well-known among contractors, engineers, property owners, anybody who's had to experience this permit process knows that there are many problems. But you know, what happens again when there's all these delays of the issuances, and they're unreasonable, is that, you know, these economically beneficial projects are delayed and end up costing the more than what was originally budgeted. Also, as you wait for the occupancy permit, you know, these construction improvements are sitting there and become a target for robbers and vandals that would destroy it. You know, then there's also the physical, personal, and spiritual enjoyment provided by completed projects that are delayed. You can ask developers and homeowners how they suffer just waiting for these things to happen. And then the government itself suffers in the fact that the receipts of revenues that can be generated by completed projects are further delayed. So the economy suffers, the people suffer. Now, we all know that the building... That this permitting system exists to protect and to serve the public. The protection is provided by adherence, of course, to our current and reasonable construction codes or policies and practices. But the service aspect of it is what belongs to the government of Guam. And so when that system is inefficient and unresponsive, the service that the public deserves is poorly delivered. And so how can we fix this? Number one, I know that they've implemented a new digital tracking system. Give it a chance to work itself out, you know. Secondly, establish standards of performance for the permit reviews and issuance, including mandatory time limits for the review of permit applications and issuing of occupancy permits. Third, we can establish procedures for dealing with what are considered to be problematic applications. Now, and what is defined as problematic, it ought to be... There should be a solid justification for that designation. It should be grounded in perhaps a code violation or an illegality. And then for those that are processing these permits, if, you know, the permit applications, if there's anything, they need a quick feedback on any problem so that they can resolve it. Also, you know, I think that we need to begin to consider outsourcing of the review of permits, if you will, you know, to qualified consulting firms in some form of a public-private partnership. There... We also should provide more resources for the building and permit review system. Thank you. I know my time's up, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to ask if there are any follow-up questions before we proceed.
I have a follow-up. I just wondered, as far as development goes, do you have any comments on the situation in and around the shipo and some of the... What we consider sometimes to be the unreasonable demands or requirements the shipo puts on developers that wasn't factored in to the cost, and all of a sudden, you know, you're going from $10,000 to $100,000 worth of things, requirements that you'd never even considered you'd have to do. Thank you.
I can take a crack at it. Yes, of course, we've heard many concerns about the shipo and the unreasonable demands they put on individuals or developers that are pursuing things. We've also heard a lot of complaints about Guam IP and the process that goes on there. I've come to know that over time, you know, when individuals are given a certain responsibility, if they're not mindful of their duties and responsibilities, they take this responsibility and begin to lord over it. And you know, you've got to have proper management in place that if someone is out of line or unreasonable, there's certain guidelines by which they ought to adhere to, and there's a certain amount of reasonableness. And there has to be a consistency in the application of the rules and regulations. Secondly, many a time, there are rules and regulations that have been put in place, and nobody even knows the source of it. Where did it come from? How did it originate? Was it a memorandum? Was it a decision made at the executive level by the director or an agency head or department head or section head? Is it codified in law? Was it an executive order? So I think there's a real need to go back and take a look at, you know, the whole concept of we do this because we've always done it. This has always been the process. We need to transform our way of thinking and accept the fact that this is an opportunity to change things. You know, they say you never put new wineskins to an old wineskin. You got to put in the new skins, otherwise it's going to burst. So coming in, we want to be able to look at what works, what's efficient. And the real identification of where the problems are are from those of you, the applicants, that face this day in and day out for every project. You have a clear definition of what the problems are, and you probably have a pretty clear idea on what ought to be implemented to bring about the change that services all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Senator Ada, would you like to answer that too?
You know, I agree with the governor. And you know, those issues that are at shipo, you know, and... Once again, these are things that we need to go back to the legislature at and ensure that all these processes that are going through, that if they're not codified, then you know what? If it's done by executive order, let's repeal that executive order. Let's look at ways to streamline the process so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just continue to roll with it and ensure that the process, it will be a much smoother, easier permitting process for those that, you know, especially when time is of constraint, when, you know, just by holding a permit back for 30 to 60 days could cost, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions. And that's not what we want. We want investors to come here and know that when they move their paperwork forward, that they will be able to get it done in a timely manner without additional costs to them.
If I may, can I just add? Can I add something? Another thing that many have complained about is the fact that if there are problems and difficulties with their application, from whatever regulatory agency there is, that if a complaint is made to that individual or processor's superior or boss or director, I've seen it even go up to senators and even to the office of the governor, there's going to be a price to be paid. And they'll give you even a harder time and delay things, and there's some price to pay. That is something that we really need to take that practice of out of it where if you have a legitimate complaint and you complain about it, you're going to pay the price. And secondly, we also know that, you know, if you know somebody within the system, if you know somebody within a particular agency, if you talk to them, maybe it can move the process along. But you know, this form of favoritism, because you know somebody, can be a cause for concern because it could lead to some form of corruption, it could favoritism and the like. And if we just bring about equity, fairness, and doing what is right and just... Everybody does their job, they stay in their lane, a lot would be accomplished. And we want to bring this mindset, this attitude of service to, again, to the government that is supposed to protect and provide the public service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another question from Mr. Carl Peterson. After that, that would be Mr. Chris Felix, and then Elizabeth Duenias. These are all follow-up questions to the original one about the improving the building permit process.
Okay.
Glad to hear that you folks are mentioning that, in effect, capital is fungible. It'll go anywhere where there's a friendly environment, where the tax policy is not going to take all their profits and that where the profits is repatriated to the investor. Because time is money, and like Mr. Ada said, it could cost that project, if it's a big project, and you're sitting there for a month, two months, or six months, or whatever, before you get any action on it. Well, that's... The investor's got to have the capital ready to go, and it's just sitting there doing nothing, so it's a lot of cost. The second thing is, we haven't mentioned recording fees in land management. I don't know how many of you have had trouble with recording deeds. But we do financial planning, so there's a lot of deed recording in transfer to a living trust, for instance. And getting through land management, first of all, you got to go in and get an appointment to see them to record the document. That's just to record it there. It's not to record it as a final deed because there's a committee that does that. Just to record your paperwork, you need an appointment. And that could be several weeks from the time you went there to get the appointment. And people are really frustrated with the system when they have to wait that long to just to get in there to record the paperwork. So there's a lot of things that impact development and a lot of things that impact actually tax revenues to the government. In the long run, it's tax revenues to the government. And the government is stopping it. So like getting occupancy permit. We had a case once where they said, well, you have to go over there first to get them to sign first. Well, I was over at GWA. So you drive from Public Works over to GWA, and then you get there, and they said, oh, no, Public Works has to sign first, not us. And then you go back to Public Works, and they say, no, absolutely, they got to do it. And you're running back and forth like they can't decide who has the authority to sign stuff. It's just a frustrating system. And if you're new to the island or you're building your first house, or whatever it is, you can't stand that. So just keep that in your quiver there when you have a chance.
Yeah, and I think it really speaks to the fact that the process is linear. You know, one agency first, then the next, and then you got to circle back. When there really ought to be a simultaneous permitting process where every agency is working on their set of plans individually and collectively, and then that should straighten things out. So there's a definite need to overhaul the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does Senator Ada want to provide his comment as well?
No, I think Governor Camacho, it's already a... No, I think Governor Camacho has already mentioned it and that we're gonna continue to work at this and we're gonna continue to strengthen the process and also the, what is gonna be the best solution for this permitting process issue.
Thank you very much, and the next question will come from, our next follow-up question to the permitting process will come from Mr. Chris Felix. Then we have our President Liz Duñez after.
Yeah, I don't wanna belabor the point. Carl was talking about the problems with buying it, owning it. John's talking about building it. My problem picks up after that with managing it. And then what I'm talking about is business licensing and renewal of the business licensing. It's just, it becomes absolute insanity and we just, you know, the very similar problem of dealing with different government agencies. Every time someone buys a project, they have to go back in and get a whole new business license, which means inspections from Public Works and from Fire Department. Sixty-seven, sixty, ninety days where you, the government, is gonna lose the GRT, the business, the BPT. You're gonna lose it because I'm gonna be renting my place and I'm not gonna pay till I get my license because I can't. It's that kind of silliness that where you lose, I lose. And then every year I gotta renew my business license. Every year, you know, I do about two hundred business license renewals because of what I manage for all the people. And every year, the same, the same, where you go to grocery seat tax and they say, "You didn't file January nineteen eighty-three. You have to get January nineteen eighty-three GRT filing." You know, it's two thousand twenty-two. Can we kinda put an end to the? Can Revit Tax say if it isn't more than, if it's more? No, you can't ask for things every year, the same thing, and I gotta keep digging it up and adding it to. Those kind of things where we can streamline, get things simpler and easier. I don't mind paying my renewal license fees. It's just the length and the breadth of all of this. Thank you, sorry.
Very good point. Automatic renewals, extended terms instead of annual. We should extend it out two, three years. There's many, many things that perhaps we can all work on and look at other jurisdictions and how they do things right. We don't need to recreate the will. Let's take lessons learned elsewhere and make things more efficient and streamlined. I agree.
Thank you very much, and I think our final follow-up question will come from our President Liz Duñez.
I'm sure both of you may have had this discussion, but I'd like to hear it from you about, you know, people who are running around trying to get permits, time is limited, projects are waiting, yet they're presented with COVID hours, as Chris has brought up and maybe Carl. COVID hours, people working out of the home, people not showing up to work. It's ridiculous. We're past COVID. And hopefully you have a game plan to deal with getting people to work or get the heck out of government, get into the private sector, because if you were in the private sector, you'd be out of a job. And so I hope you have a game plan to address the people that aren't working yet getting paid. The private sector's breaking their backs trying to make ends meet, and yet the government sector has issues that have not been dealt with.
Well, Liz, you have a very good point there. It seems, again, we're, I think, we go back to the emergency declaration, which dates back to March of two thousand twenty. We're thirty-one months into what is now a state of emergency. And, you know, I think it's Dr. Shea that said, "Well, if the point of staying in a state of emergency, medical emergency, is for more money, then, you know, we'll never get out of it." It just seems that after two and a half years going on, three years, that the government of Guam has been shut down in a comatose state. They've got to get back up and working in it. I do understand, as you said, you know, even when you go to DPW for the permitting section, you've got to sign in a log sheet and then you gotta wait outside for your number to be called. And then when your name or number's called, you would eventually go in and everybody's standing behind a shield. And sometimes there's no one else in there and you wonder, "Why were you waiting outside?" So we've got to get out of this mindset and of this state of emergency because obviously it's no longer the case, and get back to work. The private sector's been struggling and the challenge has been this, you know? Like one individual on the street said to me, you know, there seem to be, people are, at least employees and organizations are living in different worlds. If you're working for the federal government or if you're working as a Department of Defense, as a full-time employee or active duty, you're gonna get your paycheck every two weeks. If you work for the government of Guam, they've been able to find ways, of course, with the budget process passed and the moving of money around, that you were told to go home, not come to work, and you're gonna get your paycheck every two weeks. But they said if you're in the private sector, man, you've been told to go home, not go to work. How many hundreds, if not a thousand-plus businesses have been shut down, have gone bankrupt? And people have, even those that are employable are saying, "Well, why go to work when I can stay home and get more money from these federal benefits and monies than if I went and worked full-time?" So we've got to get out of this malaise and this stupor and a bit of a comatose state that we have and get back to recognizing that we're here to serve the people. And that's what GovGuam is supposed to do, is they are public servants. And so the reality of it is that the governor still keeps us in this state of emergency for, to milk the system. I mean, when you think about the carrier, the Theodore Roosevelt that was here, what did she say? "Yeah, we're milking the feds and we're milking them really hard." And so if you're staying in this, it's no longer a medical emergency or state of emergency. It's really done for political purposes and financial purposes. The authority of a governor, when they're in this state of emergency and the executive powers that they have and authority is tremendous. And they've certainly used it to their advantage. When you think of the political season which we're in, it's very obvious what's going on out there. But we've got to get the people back to work, especially GovGuam and those in the service areas, regulatory services also. Thank you. Senator?
Thank you, Governor. GovGuam needs to, you know, the governor has declared that the state of emergency for public health is only to ensure that GovGuam will be able to avail of the funding SNAP and things like that, keep the National Guard on point. No one's wearing masks any longer. There's no more social distancing. There's no protective barriers. We need to open up our agencies back to normal operating hours so that our community can come back and start making a living again. Because the longer that they continue to hamper the ability of the private sector to get back to normal, that is gonna continue to deplete the tax base revenues of the government. Because there is no longer federal funding, ARP funding, that will be coming in. And, you know, unless we start building up our tax bases from the private sector, we're gonna see a very difficult time in the near future. And all this should have actually been done six, eight, twelve months ago. So we need to get our government back online and continuing to operate at normal operating hours and extended hours if necessary to catch up what has been backlog over these past couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and our next question will come from our president as well regarding housing shortage.
Okay, Guam has experienced a severe housing shortage due to a variety of reasons. These include rising costs of construction, labor and materials, rising mortgage interest rates, construction loan interest rates, the unresponsive and stifling building permit application process, lengthy cumbersome land use permitting process, increasingly restrictive environmental regulations and constraints placed upon local housing developments by competing and more lucrative military construction contracts and H2 visa labor restrictions. What executive branch actions or policies will your team implement in, with commitment and purpose to address and resolve Guam's severe housing shortage?
I can begin by just stating that I know that one area of concern is those with the moderate income families that have been having a difficult time in being able to afford to purchase and buy or build their homes. I know that right now the mortgage rates with the banks, they've been increases thirty years, fixed at six point six nine percent right now, fifteen-year, I believe is fixed at six point oh two. And then you've got the ten-year adjustable mortgage rate, the ARMS at six point two one and then the fifteen-year ARM at five point five nine percent. And with these rates, it really is not a good time for first-time homeowners, right, to go out and purchase at these rates. These are issues, of course, rates that are beyond our control, a result of what's happening in the federal government and under the Biden administration, the rate of inflation and the like. But I know that one thing that we wanna really pursue would be what's called SUTA, S-U-T-A, the substantially underserved trust areas. With that kind of designation for Guam as a whole, it really provides for, SUTA really, it's defined as an area or community lacking an adequate level or quality of service. And SUTA is, of course, a program under the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development. It provides infrastructure funding for many, like water, wastewater and other utilities. And this was part, I think it goes back to the two thousand and eight Farm Bill. It is currently administered by the Rural Utilities Services, or RUS. And of course, the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture is the one who would determine what area has a high need for assistance. If we're able to get this designation for Guam, then I see that it will provide and authorize RUS to provide tools for us to finance improvements in our community. And with interest rates as low as two percent, so if we were able to then seek funding for rural electrification, that's one of the areas where there are direct and guaranteed loans. You've got high energy cost grants for, you know, GPA. You've got water and wastewater grants and guaranteed loans and, of course, broadband direct guaranteed loans. So if we are able to do this as a government, would get these kind of funding and build the infrastructure for, for example, Chamorro Land Trust lands and deal with all these other areas where you've got, you've got, I think, the groundwater protection zone, GPZ, that affects the descendant estates and parental subdivisions. We can help homeowners in that cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada.
Yeah, he could have taken my two minutes too. You know, what we can also look at is what can we do to perhaps exempt BPT or use tax to contractors in helping to build homes on island? And I think that when we look at these issues, that if an individual that wants to build a home and the contractor can get the materials at the cost less the BPT or the use tax, whatever it may be, it may be able to make that home more affordable. And, you know, these are programs that we also wanna look into on helping the contractors or helping the developers or helping the realtors, you know, get these type of programs working and moving forward.
Thank you very much. I'd like to find out from the panelists if there are any follow-up questions, please. I see Mr. Carl Peterson. Go ahead, please.
Okay, well, none of us, at least those that are sixty-five or older, are living in their first house. You started out with something basic and then you, you got, it's like driving in the dark. You drive as far as you can see and when you get there, you can see further. And it's like starting with a new house, a beginner's house. So what I'm saying is that if we put out a, it's like selling GTA. You put out a bid and how would you approach this? Give us recommendations and a way that you would participate in the bid process of building affordable homes that would meet the size standard and the basic requirements and et cetera. And you will get a lot of bids. There'd be a lot of people who'd wanna do that, but it won't be a castle. It will be a smaller house. And we get people started in ownership and then they keep stepping up during their lifetime. But we start with something and then they eliminate, not eliminate, but reduce the requirements that those contractors have to abide by because they're providing a product or service that is really gonna be helpful to us. There's a lot of things that can be done to help low-income housing, but it can't be with the golden slipper that you have to meet all the requirements in order to build the house. First-time homeowners will live in houses that are not as great as when they're sixty-five.
Very good points. You know, as we know, we're, the territory is dealing with the cost of construction, the cost of shipping, the cost of goods and services, the lack of labor. We're dealing with homelessness and people out there on the streets. So there are many, many challenges ahead and, and you're right, Carl. You know, is a single-family dwelling unit the absolute starting point for first-time homeowners? Could we begin to think of building up? Could we think of the fact that land is very precious and difficult to come by now? How can we work with many families that have inherited property from their, you know, from their parents, grandparents or generations ahead of them that are still trying to resolve these issues in court, you know, in probate? We, you know, system development fees, when one is told how much they're going to have to pay for water and power to bring in and sewer line, if it's even available? Which is why I mentioned the SUTA program. If we're able to, as a government, get low, this type of financing available to bring in infrastructure in large tracts of land, for example, even Chamorro Land Trust land. And as you said, take the ideas of, what is the best approach in how to build these and could these be starter homes? I know even in the state of Hawaii and other places, they've even resorted to mini homes. And back in the day with Ken Jones, with the Butler-type homes that he built in. I recall even in my day as a kid, we had the old Quonset huts that people had converted. Even my grandfather, Felix Camacho, where the GPO is located right now, he took these Quonset huts that were left behind by the military, got a plumber, got an electrician, got a carpenter and converted these Quonset huts into residential units for rent. And many people that came to Guam from outside, from throughout Micronesia looking for a job or a place to stay after the war, settled in. So there are many ideas that we need to explore, but the government doesn't have all the answers. The answers are there with the private sector and the creativity and the energy that you bring. So Tony and I would like to work collaboratively with the Association of Realtors, Contractors, Developers. And in my time, of course, we brought in low-income housing tax credits. We built, worked with Ironwood Development. Mr. Ho came in under Cortec. These ideas we even brought to Saipan and they've done it, I think, with Bob Jones and their organization. So we're open to thinking outside the box and looking for opportunities on how we can resolve this issue.
And that's why it goes back to the experts once again, and, you know, that's those in the association. And pooling from you guys to the knowledge and resources and networking that you have that can help us to ensure that we're able to move the policies forward that we're looking for in, not just affordable homes, but homes that are affordable for those who wanna purchase one. I mean, I remember way back when, you know, they used- I I mean, I remember way back when the the, you know, they used to have the modular homes that uh Jones and Guerrero used to build back in the day. Uh, is that something that can come back and, you know, as 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 structures for for families to get them off the streets and into into homes? Uh, and what is it that we can work with the with the federal government on insurance for those homes or with the? It it's just, there's, there's, there's so many things that we can do, but like I said, we just need the the expertise of those that are in the business and that's that's you folks to to help us to uh navigate this this uh this trail so that we can become successful in ensuring that people that want to have a home that they're able to.
Yeah, and if I can just add, you know, I've I've thought about bringing in, and I've tried, attempted to bring in different types of technology and building materials and different building systems for residential houses. Uh, the the first problem you're going to have is what is the cost of of shipping of these materials in if? So if it's not, if it's not generated or or manufactured on Guam, you've got a high shipping cost to bring in the raw material, first of all. Secondly, um, once you have that concept, is it insurable? Because if it's not insurable against um, against typhoons and earthquakes and fire and the like, the banks aren't going to finance it, so you know, those are factors you have to include, the insurance industry, what what is insurable? What is acceptable for the mortgage industry and the banks and um? And so there are many moving parts, as you all know. Uh, but um, we've got to continue to look for for alternatives and ways to to address this shortage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next question will come from Mr. Monte McDowell regarding the B P T. I'd like to ask Mr. Monte McDowell to unmute, please.
Thanks, Peggy. This is the famous question on uh B P T, we raised it up uh to five percent and it's just going to be for a short period, it's just temporary. And nothing more permanent than a temporary classroom, you know, and uh so we want to basically know if the legislature was to pass a law that said, okay, let's repeal it, would you sign it? And if they wouldn't, if they don't even entertain it, would you try to write a law yourself and get them to entertain it, your law, and then sign it if they passed it?
Sure. You know, um, you're 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 absolutely right. This was only supposed to be a temporary increase and it was supposed to sunset and revert back to four percent, however, that did not happen, you know, the the administration wanted to keep it forever. And when you look at what the amount of revenues that was excess revenues that was um made over the year, I mean, I believe they were looking already at almost a hundred million dollars in excess revenues. That's off the backs of the people. And that is really unacceptable. Government should be in the, it should be in the business of servicing our people with the needs but not making a profit off the people. And would we uh sign a sign into law to revert it back to four percent? Absolutely, you know, something that, you know, Governor Felix and I have always spoken about and that it was only supposed to be a temporary increase that needs to go back to four percent.
Thank you, uh, the governor, um, Camacho would like to comment on that.
Yes, well, you know, certainly, we support this. We we would have to take a look at what what's happening, I know recently the government or G I D A in um in twenty twenty one, uh, they refinanced a twenty eleven tax refund bond. Um, and of course obligated the B P T as um, as part of the original tax refund bond as a source of income, so there will be some pushback, definitely. Um, with regard to arguments on whether or not this is acceptable and is it a violation of the bond um covenants? But certainly it's worth taking a look at and and as I've said, we we do support it. As um, as Monte said, on Guam, it's very common to to think of something as temporary but permanent and but that's not the case, it it was meant in a very difficult time and then with the sunset clause, uh, the governor had stated that uh this is, this is forever. So I tell you one thing, if you want the B P T to roll back from five to four percent, then you have to elect Camacho Ada and get the current administration out because they have absolutely refused to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any follow up questions to this? From the panelists? Seeing none, we will proceed to Ms. Joanne Ege regarding public and personal health and safety.
Thank you, Peggy. Continuation of the Public Health Emergency Declaration. The declaration of a public health state of emergency to deal with the COVID nineteen pandemic was made in the spring of twenty twenty. It is now the fall of twenty twenty two and the state of emergency is still in effect. A bid scheduled to expire November fifth. The question is, discounting a year into the pandemic, which most people acknowledge as a public health emergency period, what is your team's position on the continuing extension of emergency powers into November twenty twenty two? Thank you.
Well, uh, Senator, you can begin.
Well, it's several times over the past year we've um uh, it was Bill eleven thirty six that was uh introduced and passed by the legislature and vetoed by the governor, which would repeal, which would repeal the um the public health emergency, we tried to override it several times and uh we were unsuccessful. You know, there, there's valid reasons why to maintain the emergency, you know, could be the the supplemental benefits for SNAP, the higher F map percentage for Medicaid, uh, the use of the the National Guard. But there's a problem and it's the lack of transparency, you know? We've been in this public health pandemic uh state of emergency since March of twenty twenty. And, you know, we're already now in September of twenty twenty two. It it just doesn't make sense why we continue to be in the state of emergency when ninety, I think we're already at ninety, ninety eight percent vaccinated, ninety nine percent vaccinated. Again, no one is wearing masks, there's no social distancing. Uh, people are are having fundraisers, they're having activities. So, you know, this, this uh emergency declaration needs to end and, you know, I I wouldn't doubt it if uh it ends just before election day. Just my thoughts.
Well, you know, I I'd have to say really that I can understand the first year that you would be in a, in a state of emergency with regard to public health, but it is, it is no longer it is no longer a response to what is a public health emergency. It is now turned into a political response for Governor Liu to continue this state of emergency now thirty one months running, close to going on three years. Um, you know, it's it's as if, uh, when you think about even what Dr. Tom Che had said, because she she references the fact that um this could jeopardize the SNAP monies and and the Senator had mentioned also the F map percentages when it comes to Medicaid. So you can justify that, but those can also always be dealt with with the Guam legislature and going to them and and saying, all right, for this particular area, this is what we needed for and and declare it for that particular issue. But um, like Dr. Tom Che said, if the purpose of um, of a public health emergency is to get more money, then it should never end. And obviously, it has not ended. When you think of all that's going on right now politically and, you know, let's put, let's put on our our political lenses here and and take a look at what's happening. With the, for example, the road paving programs that are ongoing, not only are you looking at main intersections and main roads and main thoroughfares, which are definitely part of the twenty thirty Federal Highway Master Plan, but you're looking at even private neighborhoods with private easements that have been paved. I even asked one, one of the administrators of a particular neighborhood, how did this happen? Because in my time, we were asking your particular uh organization and and ownership group for allowing us to come in and pave a particular road that services a a certain nursery. But um, but of course, the the neighborhood would would not want to give up the easements to the government of Guam even for that. And so we could not do it uh with these private uh easements, yet we see it happening uh time and time again. And so it is definitely used, you know, you have to understand that the governor has a tremendous amount of authority and power when it comes to procurement, the moving of resources, the moving of personnel, as she said, uh, that we have no say, well, definitely, the legislature has had no say, the Republicans have tried to uh to make a change, but it didn't happen. And so it is, it is really just a political response to what's going on. And she should end this emergency and get the government of Guam back to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, will there be a follow up question to this? From the panelists? I see none, um, we're going to the question from the the audience. Uh, it seems that we've, this has been answered regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic situation. Uh, may I ask the panelists if they have additional question to our candidates?
I think we should move on to the next question, Peggy.
Okay. Uh, that would be coming from President Liz.
Okay, new public hospital. The present administration has determined that we need to construct a new hospital and that the site will be at the former Eagles football field in Mangila along Route fifteen. There is a debate in various sectors of our island community regarding the need for a new hospital facility rather than pursuing renovation our existing public hospital. Furthermore, certain factions in the medical community disagree with the selected location. Since your administration must lead the development of a new hospital, what is your team's position on the following issues? Do you believe Guam needs a new public hospital? Or do you believe renovating the existing hospital is more viable? That's number one, and then number two, do you agree that the football field, Eagles football field, is a preferred location for the new proposed hospital? Um, and the question, if it's a yes, uh, why?
Okay. Well, I'll begin, um, in my time, it's very interesting that we were able to, despite all of the the physical challenges and the administrative challenges of the government of Guam with regard to Guam Memorial Hospital, we were able to get it J C O accredited for the first time in decades. And that was an amazing accomplishment. So when you look at what's happened over the last um, in, you know, three years with this administration, uh, they've let it crumble and um to the point where the only, the only solution they have is, well, let's build a billion dollar, what is it now, one point four billion dollar hospital up at um, up at Eagle Field. Through the decades, G M H, um, which originally that location was owned by the Catholic Medical Center. It was then bought out by by the government of Guam from the Archdiocese of Agania. I believe that um, a new hospital right now i- is is a long shot, it is, it is years away. And there's a lot of infrastructure that would have to go in and there's at a tremendous expense. The immediate need is now. That is a very dangerous situation, um, at least with the physical structure of it for both the patients and the employees. And we have to come in, I believe, with an immediate fix to it. When you also think about um um, all the ancillary services, all the clinics, all the, everything related to healthcare, the Guam Surgery Center, when you, when you think of all the the different pharmacies, all the different clinics, the birthing centers and the like that are established in the Timuning area in in proper, and then you've got G R M C close by up up north in um, in Dedido. Uh, it it is designed to serve in in this particular area, the entire island to, so I believe that um, it is, it is more viable right now to renovate and improve the existing facility. And in the short term, think of uh, or in the midterm and long term, then begin to plan for an eventual move. But we still have the old site of Oka, Timuning, the old hospital point that um, that can supplement and augment the current location that we have right now. And why aren't we also looking at the the repair of of the the central public health center up in Mangila, they've left left it vacant after the fire? What have they done to improve the northern public health center and the southern public health centers to augment the services, healthcare services of our of our government and the hospital? So um, that's what I believe on on question A. Senator.
Yeah, I I agree with the with the Governor Camacho and why we need to keep it in in Timuning. And uh, you know, renovating, renovating the current hospital, because when you look at reality, you're not going to build such a complex facility in four years, in eight years. I mean, perfect example, Simon Sanchez has been on the drawing board for for almost ten years now and still a shovel hasn't been turned to break ground and start building. And for us to even assume that we're going to build a hospital in 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 the next four years, we need to actually start renovating the the cert, the the parts of the current Guam Memorial Hospital so that that can be a safe hospital for doctors, for patients and for the staff there at the hospital that are currently there. Because they know they're not going to be able to move in the next four to six years. And that's why, yes, we, they may say that, you know, renovating may cost more money. But when you look at what they did was they used the Army Corps of Engineers to to um I I guess appraise what the cost or what the value would be to build versus renovate. And, you know, the last time I checked with the Army Corps of Engineers, it's, you know, you're building to military specifications, so, you know, you're not just building a regular hospital, you're you're building a hospital that what the military perhaps would, their standards. So it would perhaps cost more than what a civilian hospital would cost. Um, look at G R M C. So, you know, these are the things that we need to look at and reevaluate and that's what Governor Camacho and I are going to do. Is we're going to go back to the table and uh just get to it, get to work so that the people at the hospital will be safe.
Uh, the last part of the question regarding the hospital, what funding mechanism do you intend to pursue for the construction of a new hospital or for the renovation of the existing hospital?
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is take that three hundred million dollars that's sitting in our bank and begin to apply it to to address the many issues that we have, particularly the hospital. And and in addition to that, public health and social services. Um, I really feel that um, by saying I'm going to park three hundred million dollars in the bank and it's going to be reserved for the building of the hospital allows um that that financial institution to park that money in in um, the the Federal Reserve as deposits earning right now three point one five percent. Um, that's justification to keep it there. We need to take that money out, it was intended to help the people of Guam. And and one of the most important needs right now is the the dire situation of our our hospital. We can do a short term fix and and get that thing up and running, repair the maternity ward where upon which there have been many concerns, the electrical panels that are ongoing, the HVAC system and many other issues that may may involve the structural, I think even the roof that's been cracked and I mean, my gosh, if they cannot even fix a Gania swimming pool and the Dedido swimming pool and get, you know, and get Simon Sanchez High School off the ground, how do you expect that they're going to build a brand new hospital up at Eagle Field that has no no infrastructure that's there to to speak of that can support this, I mean, when we uh, when I stepped into office in two thousand and three, the first thing we had to do was harden the infrastructure by running a a substation from from GPA right above the Hilton directly to the hospitals at it in case of any emergency shutdown or or um typhoon, you've got your power source up and running. Uh, and so you you need a hardened infrastructure, what are the costs involved in 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 bringing this in? Has GPA given an estimate, has G W A given an estimate to to do that? In addition to that, you've got the original landowner situation for those that claim Eagle Field is theirs, that it ought to go back to them. In addition to that, you've got a proposed missile site for the THAAD or the Defense System of Guam close by in that same general area. Um, and and so these are many issues that need to be resolved. We haven't been We haven't been privy to all the information that they've gotten. Consultant reports on on what's there, but when we get in, we have to take a look at it and make the best decision. But for now, I'm going to take that $300 million that she's got parked in the bank and use it for the benefit of the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to find out from the panelists for additional questions. Yes, Mr. Monte McDowell, then we go to Mr. John Duenas.
Back during your first term governor, I was asked to through the Chamber of Commerce to go talk to agencies about privatization of non-core competencies, you know, that there's certain things that are inherently government, certain things that aren't. But it's hard for the local government to let loose the things and put it in the hands of the private sector, fear loss of jobs, you know, that that employee will have will end up in the private sector. Oh, my God, that life is ended now, you know? So one of the agencies we went to and presented was Guam Memorial Hospital. And I can remember, I think it was David Simmons who was the manager of the hospital and he wasn't interested and he had a million reasons why it didn't work. Dr. Chris Perez was the chairman of the board. And he concluded the meeting by saying, if it was up to me, I would stand at the door with the pink slips and let every employee at the hospital leave. And we privatized the management of the hospital. And until we do that, the hospital will always run negative and will never be efficient and never properly take care of the people of Guam. So we could talk about a new hospital, we could talk about the old hospital. But if we don't change county hospitals, territorial hospitals across the nation, whatever you want to call them, government-run hospital, just don't work. They've closed them down and the private sector is, you know, GRMC has had its challenges. And, you know, it came to a a pretty rough area to start a hospital. I maintain that hospital, I maintain naval hospital, a lot of it, you know, the privatization. You gotta you gotta run lean and mean, you gotta do what you gotta do. But the government doesn't gotta do what it's gotta do. It's just hard to change. Any comments would be appreciated.
Okay. I I, Monte, I think you you basically posed a very critical question. And from all you said, the question you're asking the both Tony and I and the people of Guam is, should the government of Guam continue to be in the business of running and managing a hospital? Fortunately, we have GRMC that that's privately run. And yeah, as you mentioned, you're well aware of having maintenance contracts on on how things work. The when the the patient to employee ratio, the patient bed ratio to employee is is pretty high for the government of Guam. I think it's double that of of GRMC. I I'm not sure or aware of what it is for naval hospital, but but definitely that's that's one one factor. I think another thing we need to think about too, we talked about a new hospital would be, should an opportunity come up for for GRMC to be on the cell block? Is that something that that might be a possibility? And if it was, who should run it and maintain it? But but definitely, the efficiencies of of things being privately run are there. I have to point to the success that we had when we we took Guam Telephone Authority and and privatized it. Yeah, I was crucified. People were really upset, but we were able to find a way to transition their employees into the private sector, secure their retirement benefits and work out another another plan. But but you look at GTA now and they were able to be competitive. And the the big challenge for them was, can we keep up with the pace of technology as a government agency with our procurement systems and all the challenges that we face? And the answer was no. So it it made public sense to do that or common sense to do that. And so when you look at the hospital, it has a mission to serve the people and no one is turned away. But we've been at it now for 50, 60 years. And what are the lessons learned? We would certainly be open to 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 thinking about different ways of doing things. And and again, it's going to go through the legislature, through policymakers, the medical community, but we are open to to looking at ways of doing things better and more efficient for the benefit of serving the people of Guam.
And perhaps, yeah, perhaps, Governor, what it can be is starting out with a PPP, a public-private partnership, and eventually, you know, seeing how that goes for a couple of years perhaps, and then completely turning it over to to be operated privately. Are those options off the table? Absolutely not. I think we we got to keep an open mind in how we deal with healthcare in this day and age and what is it that the government can and cannot do. And perhaps those are one of the things that the government needs to start to step away from and start out with a public-private partnership.
Thank you very much. I think the next question, next follow up question is coming from Mr. John Duenas.
Just an observation and then a final question. My observation is you kind of liken, if you look at the history of the government of Guam, you kind of liken it to a hermit crab. A hermit crab occupies a shell, but then when it kind of outgrows that shell, gets tired of it, moves on to another shell and just leaves that. You look at you look at our pools, same way. You look at our Public Health Center, same way. This has moved out. Many other examples. But my my question is actually related to the study of the hospital, of the proposed new hospital up at Eagle Field. I don't know, I may be completely wrong about this. I don't know that there was an RFP out for that study. I understand it's being done by Matrix. And I don't know, I don't know that they've engaged any local consultants to look at infrastructure. Maybe they have actually gone directly to the agencies. How, do you know anything about how that contract was procured? And it appears to be done, but, you know, we don't know the results.
Could be it was procured under emergency procurement, under the Public Health Declaration. Remember, we've been in this for three years now, so almost three years. And perhaps that's the avenue that they use to and do the procurement for the that site up there at Eagles Field. We we don't know that we I haven't even seen a a plan for that hospital up at Eagles Field.
Yeah, personally, I I I don't know how it was procured. I I I believe that the group you mentioned was was contracted to do a study. Perhaps, I don't know if it would be called a feasibility study, looking at any all potential sites for a hospital, whether it be up there in Mangila at Eagle Field or the old hospital point at Oka, Timuning, the current site where the hospital is situated or any other location, but we've not been privy to it. I just feel that perhaps the governor or the current administration did wanted this to be a non-issue and and say, well, if we if you if the report is ready to go, just put a muzzle on it until after the election. But if there is one, it would be very, very wise because that that's money spent. I'm sure it's going to be a good amount of money spent on on a study of that of that importance that the people of Guam need to need to see and understand. And and the community, of course, the medical community and and others would have to review this. You know, John, and there's a definite need to to consider the fact that there is so much expertise on on this island with local firms too, that that we we need to engage because of, you know, the understanding of all of all that happens on this island, the the history of things and how things have developed. So we we need to, first of all, anyway, get to to that study and present it to to all all the experts out here also for their input. And and then make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those answers. I'd like to entertain a couple of questions from the audience. First one is, do you have any plans to increase the infrastructure of Guam, sewer, roads, other utilities, so that much of our undeveloped land can be utilized? If so, what would be the timeline and plan to development to development and fund these improvements?
Well, I I want to begin by by just reiterating and going back to what I I talked about earlier with the sustainable or SUTA, which are substantially underserved trust areas, designation that could be given by the Department of Agriculture, the Secretary. And of course administered or run by the Rural Utility Services. If we're able to get this designation, and if we haven't already, it provides a funding source of less than 2% for infrastructure, whether it be water, wastewater, power, telecommunications and the like. If you understand what's going on with the any kind of development project, especially whether it be private sector or government of Guam, I would like to take those and and apply it to the areas of Tramural Land Trust where lands have been given to to recipients that benefited from this, but there's no infrastructure in place for them to develop it. If we're able to get this kind of funding at a low low interest rates and and then put in the infrastructure, dealing with both GPA, GWA, and other telecommunications companies to bring in, lay out the roads and and do a planned development with Tramural Land Trust lands, it would benefit the the homeowners because the system development fees that you got to pay right now for power, for water, for sewer, for roadways is is extremely expensive. And that's a cost that's that's borne by anyone interested in building a home or any developer, which drives the cost up and and people wonder why our homes so unaffordable. It's because of our of our fees and and the cost of putting in infrastructure. So qualifying for SUTA, going after these low interest loans that even direct grants or guaranteed loans are is one way to fund the infrastructure development. And and once you lay that foundation, then you can begin to build. Thank you.
And there's still more federal funds that are coming in with the infrastructure bill that was passed and signed. So that will continue to allow us to improve on water systems or even, you know, roads continuing of fixing the roads and bridges. So that that's what we look forward to as well and looking how it be able to benefit the people of Guam. And not wait into an election year to push those things out. We'll get those things out immediately when we get into office.
Yeah, I I do want to mention also that one of the largest ever civil utility projects undertaken on Guam is just occurred at up there at the Northern Treatment Plant to service not only the the buildup of Camp Blas and that military marine base, but also to service the the northern and central part of Guam. Tremendous. So when we look at the collaboration and the partnership, and that was funded by the federal government, Department of Defense, we have to look at other opportunities. I've always said that the buildup is coming. And there's 1.2 to 2 billion a year for the next 10 years that's happening. Many opportunities for jobs and the like, but we need to find ways of collaborating with the the military community to be inclusive and not exclusive and to for the benefit of not only the Department of Defense, but the people of Guam. So I'll be looking for for many opportunities together with the Senator to provide these type of projects and and provide the infrastructure needed for Guam. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Another question is, what will you do moving forward to ensure you are serving all of our island and not just for the benefit of Republican or Democratic parties?
I'm sorry, I I couldn't quite hear the question.
Yes. What will you do moving forward to ensure you are serving all of our island people and not just for the benefit of Republican or Democratic parties?
You know, when Governor Camacho and I first got together, it was it was on the premise that we serve all our people. Because we've seen what this past several years has done by separating, by pick and choosing, by isolating our our people. And it is, it was truly, truly devastating. When Governor Camacho and I get into office, we're going to be in office for the people. The people that elected us, the people that the people that voted for us, the people that did not vote for us, we're going to be there for everyone. Because everyone deserves the leadership of Camacho Ada, a leadership that's transparent, that is accountable, and that will be there for them when they need us.
Yeah. I I do want to quote the good Senator Frank Huggan, and he says, it's always people before politics. See, because once you get into office, you know, you're accountable to everybody. Whether they voted for you or not, you're there and you're there for four years at a time and and you've got your work cut out for you. So Tony and I have always understood that the cause is greater than Tony and Felix, the cause is greater than the Republic or Democrat Party. The cause is for our people and and this island that has gone through a tremendous time of of suffering and shutdown, where their lives and their freedoms have been taken away. They've been segregated, they were told to wear a mask, they were told to get vaccine, they were told to stay home, don't go to church, don't go to school. You know, don't go to work. And and we've suffered tremendously. What what took 50, 50 years or 60 years to build up was crushed in three and a half years. And so it's going to be a process, a process of restoration. And you can't just pick and choose, well, they're a supporter or they're of this party or that party. No, everybody's in in this together. And so we're there to serve because it's a greater cause. It's more than just he and I. And and that's what we're going to do. We're going to serve all the people. So people before politics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have reached the end of our town hall and we'd like to ask both to communicate their closing remarks up to three minutes. Thereafter, I will defer to our election chairman, Mr. John Duenas, and then our overall chairman, Mr. Monte McDowell, and our president will close. Thank you very much.
Well, to the Guam Association of Realtors, thank you so very much for having us here today. As you can see, Felix and I are working for the people. Felix and I will be there for the people. You can rest assured that with a Camacho Ada administration, you'll see transparency, you'll see responsibility, you will see accountability. We're here for everyone. And that's what you can see from us. I mean, we're Felix and Tony and we showed up. So, you know, we hope that you give us the opportunity to serve you, serve the people of Guam and serve our island so that we'll be able to move forward from this devastation of these past couple of years and start to rebuild our community, start to rebuild our families, because we need to start with our families first and start to build them up so that our community can can build as well before we start inviting all our tourists to come back, you know, we need to get our island back to what it was prior to the pandemic. And even better, you know, I don't think there's even a a plan to open up our island. So, you know, we we we're going to have this plan to open up our island and bring our tourists back, bring our our families back that who have decided to leave Ireland for the States or wherever they went, all those families, so they can come back and say, you know what, I wanted to raise my family on Guam. So that's where I'm going back because things are are getting better. There is hope. So there is hope for our future and our island. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you again to the Guam Association of Realtors for this wonderful opportunity to answer the many tough questions and even after, you know, following questions that you've presented to us. I really believe that we're here. It's a new season. It's a new season of hope. It's a new season of restoration. We've got to revive this this island again. I mean, it it was basically comatose and shut down. So we've got to again build the foundation upon which those that follow us can can prosper. There will be tough times in the world, as you see ahead of us, all that's happening, wars, rumors of wars, economic upheaval, a lot of change in leadership that's happening, I I think even in the nation as they go through this midterm election. But we are part of a great nation, the the nation of the United States of America. And Guam is a territory in that we're playing our part. But we stand here right now and are going to be ensuring that we put people before politics. It's a wonderful privilege for me to step out of retirement and come back and offer myself as a candidate together with a man that I've really come to respect and admire, Senator Tony Ada, together with our wives, Joanne and, you know, Annette. together with our wives, Joanne and, you know, Annette that are there. We're, we're uh, you've got, you've got a team, you know, of people that are completely dedicated. And if any of you know them, um, they're going to give their heart and soul alongside us to serve. It's an opportunity to, to look at the leadership in Washington, uh, an opportunity again to perhaps change the leadership in the Guam Legislature. But uh, you've known me, I've been able to colla- collaborate and work with all. I am always open to ideas together with Tony and we're here to serve. I'm just humbled and uh, I have done it before and I will do it again. And uh, lessons learned, wisdom comes with age. So I'm looking forward to this uh, I'm not that old yet though. But I have, I, I just have a, a real desire to come out and serve again as a greater cause. And there's a new season. Please vote Camacho Ada. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. John Duennas?
Uh, thank you candidates. Uh, you had the whole platform to yourselves uh this, this afternoon and you took great advantage of it. Thank you for your answers. We wish you good luck on the campaign.
Thank you.
And uh, hope to see you on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Governor and uh, and Senator, it's a real honor to have you be with the Guam Association of Realtors. We have lots and lots of people not on the screen from the Guam Association of Realtors that were here listening to your every response. Uh, very articulate, uh, it's, it's, you know, we're proud of both of you for stepping forward and running to serve the people of Guam. Done it before, you're willing to do it again. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And uh, off to Liz Duennas, our president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. Thank you Senator Tony Ada for uh appearing. On behalf of our 600-plus members, I want to thank you again, Sidus Mossi, and um, wish you the best of luck. God bless uh that you make it into office. It's unfortunate, we were unable to hear Governor Liu and Josh Tenorio, but you definitely took advantage of the platform.
Thank you.
And uh, again, uh, the Guam Association of Realtors has always been vocal. Once you make it in office, we will be there right next to you, giving you our feedback, input. And uh, of course, I think the same sentiment, it's all about our community, making a difference and not about personal issue or ego. Working together to make things happen and making a difference for our community. Sidus Mossi.
Sidus Mossi. Thank you.